Okay, everyone. The meeting will come to order. The time is 5:30 on Monday, April 26, 2021. This is a special meeting of the DC Commission on Arts and Humanities, held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act and using the Cisco WebEx Virtual Meeting Platform. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the draft of the strategic plan. I am Kay Kendall, Chair of the Commission, and I'm going to call roll. Alma? Cece? Cora?
Here.
Derek?
Here.
Gretchen?
Here.
Jose? Kimber? Mariah? Mary Ann?
Here.
Natalie? Rona?
Here.
Stacy? Hunnies? Okay, so I'm here. That's not...
Hector, I'm here.
Excuse me, Maggie. I'm looking at an old list. Sorry, Maggie.
President, hi.
Great, hi. And Carla? And Hector?
Here.
We still need one more person. Let's see. Alma's come. I see Alma and I see Cece. Great.
I'm here.
Jose, are you here now? Kimber? Mariah? Natalie?
Hi.
Stacy? Hunnies? In any case, we have a quorum. Thank you all. So before we proceed, I would like to read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life. And some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and differences. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on ancestral lands within the Kutchank, the Puketawi people. We pay respects to their elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in covering such truths at any and all public event and to use such truths to guard the legacy of the Arts Commission. Before now that I've adopted the agenda for this meeting, it's been circulated to all commissioners. Are there any objections to the agenda as it stands? Hearing objections, the agenda stance is approved. And with that, I will turn it over to David Gallagher, author of our strategic plan.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for attending this meeting. I'm just going to wait until Patrick has the title slide up. Patrick is going to advance slides for me. I want to focus on this one for a moment. Can you all see that title page?
Sorry, I'm just trying to switch to presentation view. Sorry.
Patrick, if you look at the icons on the bottom, it'd be the...
Yeah, the computer is just freezing up. That's...
Oh, sorry. That should work. Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yes, that's the full screen.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Well, what we're looking at for discussion purposes tonight is a draft of the strategic plan for the agency in just the three years, 2021 to 23. And you're also going to be looking at an executive summary. So this is just a peek at the at the plan, although you've all received a much fuller version by email in the last several days. If I if I could, Kay has asked me if I could make this presentation in 15 or 20 minutes, and I think that is possible. But I wonder if I could ask folks to hold their questions until the end. I've done the best I can to anticipate questions and deal with them kind of in logical order. And I think if I finish in 15 or 20 minutes, we'll have plenty of time for discussion. So thank you for that. The other thing to say maybe before we go any further is that this is just one point in the rollout of this plan. At the very end of the presentation, you'll see what the next steps are. But basically, there are several of them that go through June, including another meeting of this commission, once the document is in final form. But next steps involve a public posting of the of the plan, which remains on public view for 30 days, and there are comments. And I still have some interviews still to do. So those of you who have looked at Appendix B, the stakeholders that have been interviewed and are to be interviewed, there are still some to be done. And they continue to be quite interesting to me. And you'll hear a few of the more recent observations as I make it through this presentation. So this process is just at the beginning in a certain way. The next slide is good, Patrick. So my name is David Gallagher, and I'm pretty sure I have met all of you actually by this point. I am a DC resident. I live here. I care a great deal about this community and certainly the arts and cultural components of the community. But my practice in the arts, cultural, and education sectors is national. So my clients are all over the country. I just have a special interest in this one. I live here now. I lived here years ago, before, during, and after law school at the University of Virginia. So I have some continuity of contact with the area and love being a resident here. My partners are Lord Cultural Resources. This is a large consulting practice for our sector. It's not a large company, but in the sector of cultural planning and consulting, this is a very large organization with assignments all over the world. And joining me this evening is Eve Moros Ortega, who has conducted with me many of these interviews and has been a great resource to me, along with her partner Joy Bailey Bryant, who many of you have met also. One of the huge advantages of working with Eve and Joy is the fact that that firm, Lord, did a very similar strategic plan for the New York State Council on the Arts in 2018. So they are very familiar with the landscape that the DC Commission is facing. Next slide. So this is what the process looked like. You know, several months, February, March, and April, composed in major fashion of these confidential interviews. And now there are nearly 50 of them, and by the time we're done, there will be 50 or 55 stakeholders that I interviewed confidentially. And we also conducted two public meetings virtually. I would say, just a quick comment about the public meetings. They were very positive meetings. One never knows in listening to comments made in public setting, especially about a funder, whether comments are completely candid. But it was very nice to hear the positive community response to the agency in that context. I would make the comment about the folks that we were interviewing confidentially. These were, without exception, very smart and engaged, candid people. There were, you know, there were not, there was not a dud amongst them. They were very engaging, gave a lot to the process of speaking with me. And their views were largely consistent. This is a theme that I'll touch upon in a moment. Next slide. So these are the people who we interviewed, and they are listed in Appendix B in detail. But the commissioners, of course, and I'm positive really at this point that I have either met all of the commissioners in a one-on-one situation or in a small group situation when we were reviewing the draft plan a couple of weeks ago. As far as the agency staff is concerned, Haran, David, and Jeffrey were interviewed, and I have several interviews coming up with grants managers. The commissioners expressed an interest in my interviewing a group of grants managers. So that still is to come. The idea task force members, I think it's also true of this group that either as individual members of that task force or as a group, I interviewed all of them, which was terribly helpful. Also grantees, this was a sampling of individual artists and organizations. It's also true of item number six. This was a sampling of business improvement districts and others in the community whose work intersects with the agencies. Number five was quite a large, a long list, an interesting list of your colleagues and peers in district government who interface with the agency in one way or another. Next slide. There was another component to the plan, which just had to do with research and looking at a variety of documents as background. One of them, the first one, is the previous strategic plan. Very interesting, of course, and there are many threads that continue from the past plan to the present. One of them certainly is the idea concept, the precursor precursor to the idea concept, which shows visibly in the prior plans. The enabling legislation, in a way, to me, confused more than clarified the situation of the agency, but we'll return to that theme in a moment. The DC cultural plan, one of my, one of the stakeholder interviewers, interviewees simply referred to it as having laid an egg. But there are certain themes of that plan, and again, we'll return to these, that it's the feeling of the stakeholders and certainly my observation that it's worth the agency's initiative in in returning to aspects of that plan. The idea task force, there was a huge amount of documentation generated by this group of very hardworking folks who met for six months or so in 2020. And so this was a very rich resource for me as someone planning the 2021 to 23 timeframe. Because this task force, via these surveys, the verbatims, the benchmarking studies, the findings, and the recommendations accomplished a lot of the work of this plan. And so this plan, you'll see, being built around that work. The task force recommendations, of course, are part of the plan. They're Appendix A. But much about the plan that we're discussing tonight keys off of the task force work, not just as it relates to inclusion, diversity, equity, and access, but as to many other aspects of the agency's work. Next slide. So these next, a couple of slides just refer to themes of the of the plan. And these later translate into goals of the plan. Certainly, the first of them is to embed IDEA as a core value in agency grant making, programs, governance, and operations. Two, to lead, and there's an emphasis on that word, lead, the post-pandemic recovery of the arts and culture sector, but also, and very ambitiously, contribute to the broader social and economic recovery in the district. One example of leading the post-pandemic recovery of the district and contributing to the broader social and economic recovery that I found myself and my stakeholder interviewees referring to frequently was the success of Black Lives Matter Plaza. I can't remember, in my own experience, a better example, a more powerful example of the potential of public art to transform, create community. And this is an example of how the stakeholders view the capacity of the agency contributing, not just to the arts and cultural sector, but to the broader social and economic recovery. Improving, three, improving the agency's alignment with the executive and legislative branches of district government. As I interviewed that fairly large circle of DC government executives, I would ask, or either directly or indirectly, where the champions of the agency and of the arts and culture agenda in the district were at the upper reaches of the district government? And the answer was disappointing. People would say, well, that's what Jack Evans did. But it really became clear to me that Jack Evans, obviously, is no longer part of DC government, that there wasn't a key advocate for the agency embedded in the upper reaches of the district government. And that is a theme we'll touch on again. Number four, also we'll touch on again, improving relationships, commissioner to commissioner, commissioner to staff, inter-staff relationships and morale. Very, very important in in being able to realize any of the other goals of the plan. Next slide. So to touch on the IDEA emphasis, one of the commissioners at one of the small group meetings observed that there wasn't a definition in previous drafts of this plan when we were meeting in small groups with commissioners and task force members. And so I was pointed to this one that was used by the task force in the surveys and in their other processes, a working definition of equity. And whether this is where the organization stops in its evaluation and discussion of what equity means, I think it's a very powerful statement of the moment. And so I wanted to include it in this summary, executive summary, but I also introduced it into the plan itself. And the other thing to say about this is that not only is this a working definition, and not only are there recommendations attached to this plan, but those recommendations are in the process of being implemented. So I think the organization is due huge congratulations on its effort in moving this agenda forward. And on the eve of the discussion around NACOC, or I think it's not even the eve, I think you took action a week ago on NACOC, this is a very powerful demonstration of how important the equity themes have surfaced in the day-to-day working of the commission. One of the recent people I interviewed, when I was asking the typical question, what are strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats? And this individual said to me, just, you know, leaping out in front of the whole thing. He said, well, the threat is that the agency doesn't get equity right, that getting equity right and establishing itself in this community as a credible arbiter of equity, he felt, was the most important threat in a way, but it's also the opportunity. And so I was happy to tell him. He wasn't as aware as I obviously am of the work that the commission has done. But this is hugely significant. Next slide. So the key issues are the things that, the questions that the plan needs to answer in order to be successful. The first one, the implementation of the task force recommendations, is you can almost put, you know, a penciled-in check next to it because those recommendations are so thorough, and they really are implementation or action steps that the organization is undertaking. There's an idea committee of the commission that's been established to evaluate success. And with the executive director, that committee will be making regular reports to the commission publicly. And I think one of the recommendations of the plan in the finer print is that that be done at least quarterly. The other, the two, three, four, and five, we'll discuss further in a few minutes. But I would say, just to comment on number three, this was an issue, a set of issues brought to the fore by the task force, just how big a gap there is between what the commission does and thinks it's doing and the community, the diverse communities all over the district that don't know about it. So that's a key, a key measure of the commission's success going forward. And next slide. So just a comment here about the stakeholders. They were very consistent in their feedback. There were very few outliers. The feedback to the commission is really the same from this stakeholder group. There's there's no dissent. You know, there aren't, there aren't commissioners who are saying, or not commissioners, but stakeholders who are saying that the connection between the agency and the community is excellent and can't be improved. There are not stakeholders who are arguing that the commission size of 18 is the right number. I mentioned those just as two examples. The community stakeholder feedback is the agency can do a better job, much better job at communicating, and the size of the commission is too large. I might just touch on number six for a moment. We'll touch on this again. But I think the group is very conscious of the need to improve relationships and morale because each of you, in your own way, commented on that to me. So there's no debate about that. But I, I want to explain a little bit more about what I mean about a sense of security for staff and community. One of the things that happens when an organization is under fire publicly, when there is a rotation of staff, is that people become insecure and feel unsafe and that, and as if their jobs might be at risk or as if their funding might be at risk. And certainly, in the case of NACOC, for example, that was the environment a few years ago that resulted in NACOC heading for the city council and making this bold move to secure their own funding, really sidestepping the agency. So that's what I mean when I, when I focus on that and how important it is to to approve that. Next slide. This is another key finding. The agency became independent of the mayor two years ago, in the sense that it has the authority to hire the executive director now, as opposed to being appointed by the mayor. But even in that case, the consent of the of the city council, of the district council, is required. And these other points, one, two, and three, just point to the bigger picture, which is that the mayor still appoints the chair, still appoints all the commissioners. And the budget is controlled by the mayor and the council. And even though it is set today as a certain percentage of the sales tax, that can change at any time by will of the mayor and council. The council also performs the annual, does the annual performance evaluation. So listening to the stakeholders, my best advice to the commission is to focus on interdependence, interdependence, not independence. Next slide. This, this is a kind of a corollary of what I've just said. Because the agency isn't completely independent, because it is interdependent, it's very important to build relationships with other sectors of district government, especially as it attempts to achieve what the stakeholders want the agency to achieve, which is much higher impact across not just the arts and culture sector, but all sectors of DC life. It was pointed out to me that this observation, I'm not the first person to make this observation. The observation has been made, a comment made, that the agency is like the thumb on the hand of district government off to the side. Next slide. So these, these bullet points just go to the capacity of the agency to grow in stature and influence in the, in the district and the feeling that this is completely possible. As an example of the kind of opportunity that's out there, several stakeholders said to me, you know, there's $2 billion of federal funding coming into the desk, into the district, you know, via recent federal legislation. And the stakeholders I spoke to were not aware of any effort inside DC government to look at that $2 billion through the arts and culture lens. And the stakeholders want that. They miss it. They expect it of this agency. And it's a huge opportunity. But does it, it takes staff to do that. It takes budget to do that. And to the extent those, that budget and that staff doesn't come from the agency itself, it comes from partnerships with other district government agencies. Next slide. So one stakeholder put this question like this. And frankly, this is the same observation that I have made myself and I've heard made by many others throughout my entire career in the arts, which is the classic tension between the program of an agency and the marketing and promotion of the agency. So I think we've come a long way in our understanding that both are terribly important. But I would say the agency has more ways to go in understanding that not only must it do outstanding and equitable grant making, but it has to shout about its work to the rooftops and make the connections between what it's doing and the welfare of the diverse constituencies it serves in the district. As an example, people pointed to the DC Public Library and the Friends of the DC Public Library, which is a separate citizens advocacy group that is centered on every neighborhood library. Every neighborhood library has a Friends of the DC Public Library. The agency probably doesn't have that exact same capacity, but this is just food for thought that it's, and it's a big job. It's a big job to communicate and market and be a catalyst and excite the community about the capacity of arts and culture to transform. to transform their lives and the lives of all the constituents and taxpayers of DC. It's a big job. Next slide. As to number one, everyone knows this and all of you and the stakeholders told this to me. This gets in everyone's way. In the words of one commissioner, someone who incidentally said that she was counting, she or he, excuse me, counting the days until his or her term was up. She, she views this factor as being tattamount to the commission killing itself from the inside. Number two, I just, I learned in a recent interview, this person I was speaking to, who knows the organization very well over a long period of time. She said to me, there were 10 executive directors in the 10 years that she was watching the organization closely. Well, I could hardly believe that. I knew there were three executive directors in the last three years, but I could hardly believe there were 10 in the last, in a, in a, in a prior time, prior timeframe. So I checked that out with, with Jeffrey today, who, who gave me a list of all the executive directors, all of them going back to day one. And since 2007, there have been 11 executive directors in that 14 year period. Kay, Kay in her six years has worked with six. That's an average of 15 months per person. In that period of time, an organization that is succeeding powerfully at its mission should expect three. A person in a complicated, complex environment like this one in an executive director position is not going to be able to move the needle significantly on any, in any major way in less than five years, just a rule of thumb. So overcoming these two challenges is essential to everything else. Next slide. So these are the planned goals and each of these occupies a few pages in the longer document that you looked at. But these are the five rallying cries for this plan. Number one, embedding IDEA as a core value, driving every aspect of the agency's programs, governance, and operations. Two, helping the district recover from the pandemic, not just arts and culture, but all of the constituent sectors of the district. Very ambitious, but your stakeholders are telling you, you're capable of doing this. Three, this theme around communications, you must trumpet what you do. You have to make everyone in every far reaching corner of the district aware of what you're doing. Four, in order to succeed at the more ambitious platform your stakeholders see for you, coming into alignment with the other branches of government, the executive and legislative branches of the government is terribly important because you can't do this work by yourself. Again, no, no man is an island. And five, which I just spoke about, unless you do five, you're going to not be nearly as successful with one through four. Next slide. So appended to the plan is the task force recommendations, which as I've said before, there's a lot of work already done and under your belt. Those recommendations are an implementation plan also. So when the staff takes the next step and implements the plan that we're discussing, it will look granular in the way that the task force recommendations do. So those recommendations are a great model. And I mentioned the stakeholders interviewed and the fact that some of those interviews are still occurring. So next slide. So today's obviously the 26th. I mentioned that the public comment period, which is basically a month. And then I will incorporate any comments that are coming from the public into a final draft and circulate that draft to the commission leadership. And that is the chair, the vice chair, the commission chairs and agency senior staff, and that would be Iran, David and Jeffrey. And then on the 21st, you'll look at the results of those changes, comments from the public and any technical changes. And then, as I mentioned, in July and going forward, there's the matter of implementing this plan, which is a staff driven exercise. And again, the task force recommendations are the blueprint. So I'd be happy to take questions. I realize I took longer than Kay wanted, but I, I hope there will be questions.
Well, you kept our attention. I just thought 20 minutes maybe is a rule of thumb for that. And thank you, David. And yes, you just asked for questions and now we can see people. So anyone want to raise their hand or? I see some people here I hadn't seen before, huh? Jose, hi, Mariah.
I just want to mention the fact that maybe I didn't before that Eve Monoz Ortega is here with us from Lord. So I'm just, she can wave. I'm delighted to have her here tonight also.
Thanks. Well, I can't believe no one has anything to say. That would be a first for this group.
David, I, I, I might've been one of the first people that you interviewed, but, and I know that this was a daunting task to put this kind of presentation together in such a short period of time. But I honestly believe if we look at this from what you started in this presentation, you hit the nail on the head. We do have our work cut out for us. I mean, we, we're coming from different places and different situations in terms of where, where the commission was, where the relationship with staff was with the commission. But I can honestly say that yes, as a participant of the task force, as a staff member and now seeing your presentation, it hits some painful spots, but it's work that needs to be done. So thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Does anyone have any questions about what they think about its priorities, the key findings, next steps?
Hey, I have a question.
Okay.
Can I?
I'm not sure who that was. Yes, please go ahead.
Me, Rona. David, when you put your, the rest of the work together, will you reference the task force recommendations? Cause there are 44 of them. So in your draft, it's difficult to see because they're integral to your report. So can you correlate specific task force recommendations to the strategic plan areas? Because if you weren't on the task force, you really can't understand which ones apply to which. So I'd like to see references there.
Yeah. Well, Rona, I mean, I obviously could read those recommendations, which I did, all 44 of them. And there are certain of them that I highlighted in the text or in, under the goals and, you know, broader strategies. But there are a lot of them, there's 44 of them. I think the, the next step is the, is the implementation of this strategic plan. And this strategic plan is somewhat broader than what the task force attempted. Although what the task force did was broad also. So the task force dealt with governance issues, for example. So I think what you want is, is going to happen. Rona, it'll, it'll be a next step. It'll be the implementation plan, you know, for the strategic plan. It's a next step. It's another, it's another amount of work.
And are you going to put the accountability of a set in governance? Are you going to have an accountability section in there? I didn't see that in this summary.
Yeah. So all the accountabilities, who's doing what, who's responsible, whether there's, whether there's dollars associated with it, et cetera, on that timeline. Those things would all be addressed in an implementation plan. And what I'm saying is the task force recommendations really are that as it pertains to those areas of the commission's activity. But that didn't cover, that doesn't cover everything. So in respect of other aspects of the plan that we're discussing now, that next step has to be taken. It's largely a staff driven exercise. So I can provide guidance, I can provide workbooks. And in fact, the, the task force recommendations in a way are their own template. But that, that has yet to be done. So this is, this is really a matter of checking in with the, with the commissioners for a green light as to, these are the five goals. These are the major imperatives and strategies before we take the next step, which is to get into the granular detail.
Well, I didn't, we're not having a vote tonight, any, or are we? That's not how I understood this. I thought this was just an informational.
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a chance to give feedback because this, there won't be another chance. This is a chance, if there's anything you really think is terrific or you disagree with a lot or just any comment at all, this is a chance to really give it to you. Is that right, David?
Yeah, it definitely is. But it's also true that we had these small group meetings. We had three of them and there were six or eight of you, including task force members involved in each of those three discussions. So that was very important and valuable. And I tried to reflect the, the importance of those discussions in the draft you see now.
Okay. Well, maybe you hit a home run, David. Maybe nobody has any to add or to.
What I would say, what I would say.
I see one or two people, Marion, have you raised your hand? Yes, I think you did.
I just first wanted to compliment David and the group. I think it, it's really a pretty comprehensive, really, I think you asked a lot of really good questions and came up with some really good information and I, you know, thoughts for our, for our planning process. And you incorporated a lot of what's been going on at the commission. And, and I really, I want to praise, praise the group for that. I've worked on many comprehensive plans and it's not an easy task. But I, I didn't hear mention of some of the other issues. And maybe that's getting too much in the weeds that we've been presented with often about the issue of housing and mental health issues that have come up. And how, unless it's just really incorporated in how we, we coordinate with other agencies and, and that would be how we would deal with that. But that's probably how it is. Yeah.
Marion, that is exactly how it is. So those, those issues are underscored. I believe it's in goal two. Maybe it's goal four. But those very examples, so those are, yeah, it's goal four. If you have that document, it's page 12. Goal four, point number four. It, those are tied to building relationships with other sectors of DC government where the influence, the commission can influence and these agencies would like that influence. But it's that partnership that is going to create the opportunity for real improvement in the daily lives of artists in the district, as an example.
Yep. I'm just going to jump in to add that the presentation goes hand in hand with that document, which does have more detail because it's not possible, given the time limitations to get into every detail. But yes, it, Marion, those are exactly the kinds of alignment, cross-sector relationships advised in the plan.
Thank you.
This, hello, this is Hector. I, I just have a real question that I would like to report. David, if I may, David, was there any effort in, in terms of communicating with and or judging based with former directors to find out perhaps what, what caused or was causal to the constant, I would say, change in, in management staff? Because no matter how effective or how brilliant the plan would be, if we do not have the opportunity to retain key members or all members that are, you know, part of this plan, it would be just an exercise in paper. It would never really get materialized if you don't have that kind of continuity. Has that been addressed or, or even thought of in terms of how do we move forward?
Well, I'll tell you, you can see by looking at appendix B that the only former executive director whom I talked to was Arthur Espinoza. And, you know, not to speak out of school here, but I, I, I really wasn't interested in dissecting Arthur's opinions about his tenure as executive director. We talked about many other things and he was fascinating and very informative on the question, for example, of the diversity initiative and, and how far back in time it goes in commission history into the prior strategic plan, et cetera. But one comment I would make, I'm glad you asked this question because it reminded me of another quote or verbatim, another, the same individual who commented about the fact that there were 10 executive directors in the particular 10 years that she was associated or knew, was watching the commission carefully. She said, you know, she kind of paused and she said, you know, and I, I don't want you, I don't want anyone to get the impression that these were 10 duds, that there was something wrong with the performance of these executive directors. She said, not everyone was a home run, but some of them were. So, you know, I think the comment, the takeaway is it's in the environment that is causing the difficulty to attract and retain the caliber of leadership that the commission definitely needs. Now, the commission needs commissioners and needs oversight. And there are ways that I suggest in the plan that commissioners might be further engaged, for example, in the process of aligning the agency with district government. But the executive director runs the agency. The expertise around great, around grant making is in her or him and in the staff. And the commission relies upon that expertise and that leadership. And there's been so much turnover, often the stakeholders I was interviewing didn't know who was in charge of who the executive director at the agency was. Even some of you have not fully remembered. And when, you know, when you were asked, well, what about so and so? Oh, yes. So this is, I, I think, you know, I, I'm not prepared to, you know, fully diagnose, but I think it's a very, very good question, Hector. And
David, David, can I add? Hector, I want to add something to that though. One key reason is that every new mayor has the chance to appoint their, you know, they, they influence the shifts. So sometimes when the mayor was appointing the ED, a new mayor would come in and want their own. So that accounts for some of the turnover. And some of the people in that time were also interim, holding the place while the mayor figured out who they were going to appoint. So the numbers say one story that's still true, but literally there's some reasons behind it also.
Well, that's, that points out another issue, which, you know, is dealt with in the longer document. The question of how does the commission communicate with the mayor over its own governance needs? Yes, these are political appointments, but in other cases, other state arts agencies, there's a good dialogue that happens between the agency and the appointment process to identify the needs and to kind of deal with that political environment more proactively. So it's a reality and it's not the same as a not-for-profit board doing its own self-selection. But I thank you for making that point, Kay. I'd forgotten that.
Can I just add?
Yeah, go ahead, Hector.
Yeah. Additionally, you know, I think that it's important to understand that those people on the council that really create policies and lend their support have very different priorities related to their own districts, et cetera, et cetera. So that there has got to be a real effort, I think, hopefully led in some respects by commissioners to create a greater awareness on how the arts commission can actually impact favorably in their own particular areas so that they understand the value. I think absent that equation, sometimes arts is not. I think absent that equation, sometimes arts is not looked upon as a priority simply because arts is not always related to economic growth and, uh, job opportunities, et cetera. How do you translate the function of the commission, or should I say the, yeah, the commission per se, as to how it doesn't improve the life of people that live in the district? And that I think would be very cool. To create an understanding among the council members so they become better supportive of the organization.
Well, th- these are, that's a, those are very important points, Hector. So in other states, uh, there often are citizens advocacy organizations somewhat like Friends of the DC Library that interact with the elected officials, interact with the state arts, arts agency, but are based in legislative districts, or you think of the wards. Who are the constituents? Who are the arts and culture advocates and the artists and the organizations living in each of these eight wards? And how is it that that potential can be unleashed on the elected officials? It's also true, Hector, that the commissioners themselves can help, I think, in this regard a lot. I was surprised and disappointed in the, uh, in the number of council members who I did interview, who are wonderful people and smart, but their, their eyes are on other matters. And, uh, there, there simply isn't the strong leadership or advocacy on the council and you need it.
David, Alma's been trying to say something for a long time.
Yes, Alma.
Thank you. Good. You have put together an excellent plan with real guidance in that, um, one of the, um, departments that is missing from the list under number five on page 12 is the Office of Planning. It is probably the most powerful agency in the DC government. They make many, many decisions. And, um, we, the public art department has worked closely with them in the past. And I would say successfully. But again, um, I think they should be added to the list. I think you did talk to Andrew Trueblood, the director.
I did, and that, that's just, that's just.
Also.
That's, that's just, that's an omission, Alma. So thank you for pointing it out. That's, that should be there.
Okay. Um, another the commission used to do ward reports. And, um, the representative of the ward and other commissioners would usually go and visit with the council member and go over the report to sort of the state of the arts in their ward. So maybe it's time we, um, begin to look at, uh, bringing those back because they were, they were fairly thorough. And I think the, uh, council members appreciate it. It's a, it's a good way for us to, um, sound our horn.
I think that's an excellent idea. Ward by ward.
And we also have the other, we have four at large members. And, um, I think, I don't know whether we want to dump all eight, uh, reports. Some of them, but certainly something should be done for them.
Yeah. Well, the plan, the goals and the plans around these ideas of yours, Alma, are, it's pretty clear. So what you're suggesting are in the way of implementation steps. Those are good implementation steps. And they're consistent with the goals and the strategies, uh, in the plan that, that you have in your hands. Except I left off the office of planning.
Um, we have five or 10 more minutes. I think we should keep this to about an hour's meeting. So I just want to say that in case anybody else wants to say anything.
Well, I know I, I have just a closing thought. And several of you have mentioned some of the tougher aspects of the feedback. You know, that's true. That feedback is tough and it's real and it's consistent. Uh, and as your consultant, it would be, I would be remiss in not reporting it to you exactly as I heard it. So that's that. You have that feedback. But I also want to say, on the subject of IDEA, that the organization has done a huge amount of work and it's very apparent to me that that momentum is carrying through your current grant making cycle. And that on the other side of it, you are going to have grant making that meets a different definition, definition of equity. So that is hugely important and successful and you should feel really good about that. For whatever the negative feedback that's part of this, uh, please feel good about this other work. And as that one stakeholder said to me clearly, that is the biggest thing. That's the biggest threat, but it's also the biggest opportunity. You're, you're seizing it. And if you can do that, you can do the rest of this.
Jose.
Hi there. Yeah, thank you. Um, just wanted to again to say, David, uh, you touched on so many areas. And you were very realistic, uh, very forward coming with some of the comments that you heard. And that's what I think is a strategic plan is, I think we, the commission, and that is obviously led by the wonderful staff, dedicated staff that we have, is doing a good job. I mean, it's not been easy. It's been a, um, changes left and right. But I think in managing the staff, you know, Heran has brought them together. David is a, a great leader and we have, um, you know, especially in Brian, a great, um, treasurer who manages our money. I think, um, we, I look at it with optimism to even further improvements. I think by doing this and having done the public art, um, plan also, I think we commissioners and the staff are getting more engaged and we get to work together i- in, in different areas. So thank you for pulling it together, uh, to the rest of your wonderful team. And, you know, once, you know, we, the common period ends, we will see what it, what all comes together. But I know it was not easy and thank you.
You are most welcome.
Well, I, I started with, thank you, cause I know you've been on a short timeframe. And, um, working very diligently and constantly to pull this together and to embrace as many different voices as you can. You've done great homework and I, I think we all appreciate it. Thank you, Ava. I know you've been part of the team. And it's a big commitment. Is anyone else? Any other one last comment before we close the meeting? Okay. Then I think David, you were clear and organized and, um, made a great presentation. So thank you so much for that. And I'm sure you'll hear from us one way or another.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, everybody for coming to this meeting today.
Bye now.
Bye.
Bye.